In the Pan-African Parliament, which is the African Union Parliament in Johannesburg, South Africa, where I start as the head of the Gambia Division and also the head of the African Parliament. Very happy to be here, this is my first time in Norway, and really, I feel like I'm home because of the people that we meet, and I'm also glad to also see our own brothers and our own sisters in this country. So, I'm here to answer any question that you may have, because again, when you are away from the country, we on the ground, perhaps we may know more about what's going on. And again, it's inevitable that we may speak differently, but I'm here as Member of Parliament to also assist to clarify anything that you may have concerning the Gambia, concerning the Parliament, or concerning African Union itself. I'm aware, I've been a Member of Parliament for the past eight years. So I want to thank you very much, very much, to see you and also talk to you today as your own brother and also as your own son and brother as well, as your own son. Thank you very much.
Good evening, and thank you very much. Thank you, Nene, today, the people and the team, the march, for the warm reception that we received since we arrived in Brussels, as we just got there. Life was great, it made us not miss school. It's not my fourth time in Norway, I've been coming to Norway since days ago. When I was very active in the Gambia community in Sweden, I used to do the dedication to come to Norway to celebrate the Gambia Cultural Week. I grew up in Sweden, in Scandinavia. I went to school there, I was living and working in Sweden, I was just a normal migrant, who might have been from down there to Europe to look for a better path. I came to Sweden when I was young, I didn't come to educate, I came to work as a normal migrant. But along the way, I realized that working makes money, all you can send back home and help one family. But if you get educated and you go back home, it has transformed not only your family, but their family. That is why I would myself dedicate it, and when I finish my education, I dedicate it to my home, to contribute to society. And so that I've been doing that, both at university, while I'm teaching, and I'm in college, where now I serve in government. I'm the Minister responsible for information, media broadcasting, and my role as a minister is not only to brand the government, but also to ensure that the public is always fully aware of what the government is doing. My role is to ensure that we create the mechanisms so the public are always accountable, but also to promote transparency, would be consolidate our democracy, democracy is for the public and the political transparency. So my role is to ensure that the public knows what the government is doing, our programs, our projects, our achievements, our initiatives, our activities, and also my role is for the government to know, public's concerns, their aspirations, their challenges. So I thought of creating, that is why I'm making activities with pro-active this growth. Before public even come to ask us about information, we give them information, for we think that for the public to make informed, they must have access to information. And access to information is not only the human side, it's also a constitutional, it's a constitutional issue. That is why we promote. And we pass so many laws, essentially, so many innovative ones, particularly the access to information law, which gives every Gambian citizen the right to request for any information, from any information pool, and that's what is done by a lot of the proper information within African Union. Please, not all countries have that information, and it's helping us a lot, because it's also one of the instruments that is helping us promote democracy. Now, where I'm supposed to go for a different business, like my sister and my sister, this application, this identity internet organization, but I knew that being in Wales will also give me the chance to be a Gambian community, but also friends of the Gambia, for us in any African country, to discuss about each other, and we are here to speak, that we're here to listen, as I said, we want to speak the Gambia, the Gambia citizens, in particular in that, in the concerns that we are, and what are the challenges that we can take back home and try to escalate these challenges, so we can address them, yeah. So we'll listen more, but also, some of you have great ideas and great networks that you can help bring back home to Gambia and change lives. So for me, it's about partnerships, it's about listening to your concerns and challenges, but also some of the good ideas that you might have, that if we take back home and escalate, we are able to change lives in every sector. So I thank you very much for coming, and I thank you for your attention. I'm looking forward to very fruitful discussions, like the Honorable Bo had said, we are open to any questions, any ideas you might have to share with us, and then we can discuss and work together, to not only make Gambia a great country, but also to make Africa a very great continent. Thank you.
Just to just inform everybody, this is broadcasted live, so everybody is live at the moment on public social media, so just so that everybody knows. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Honorable Minister and Honorable Parliamentarian. The floor is now open, you wanted to start?
Maybe I should give a sad story, but fortunately, it's sad.
Yes.
Okay.
You did approach, but...
Yeah, in 2014, I decided to invest in Gambia, big scale, based on the slogan or the quote for the former president, eat what you grow, grow what you eat. So I met the Gambian guy in Oslo, seemed fair to me, we went to Gambia, I built a huge poultry farm in Rumbavilic outside Brikama. After two or three years, I understood he had loved me. So I've been in court for seven years now, and I don't know what's going on. And it's very sad, because I really like Gambia and the people, so I don't allow one apple, one rotten apple to destroy the whole boat. So, and I'm not giving up yet, but I have been there for two years, because I'm a little bit scared actually to go there, because I understand that these guys are criminals. So at one time, they took my passport for six months, through the setup, I got released, and then we went, okay, I went back to Oslo, and I'm fighting my case still. I don't know how, I don't know whom to double-check my standing, because whom do I call? I have lawyers down there, but since I've been in Norway, I have not met the lawyer, and the guy, Abudunjai, he's, I figured out later, or during this period, that this guy's a criminal, he's been doing things, not only in Gambia, bad things, but in Europe, or Norway also. So, that is my sad story, but the good story, I'm not giving up, because I like Gambia, and I want to go back, I have plans. Talking to, I'm talking to Norwegian broadcasters for the last three months, two months, because I'm not the only one in the West that has been duped, unfortunately, yeah, so we try, we're not trying, but we are thinking about making a documentary about investors from West or East, whatever, that are being duped in a sad way. And yeah, the good thing, I'm not stopping, but I just want to tell the importance of keeping the investors in good hands down there, because if not, they will not come. And if I go broadcasting with my story, not many will come after that, you know, which is normal. So I'm trying to find my way here now, and I'm ready to go to Gambia any day, as soon as the magistrate or anything give me something that is handy, that can get back my properties, and continue my work there. That's my story, guys. Sorry.
Yes, thank you very much for being very open, and I do want to apologize for your bad experience that you have in our country. Now, because personally also, I lived outside of Gambia for several years in the US, and I have a feeling that something has, actually has gone wrong, but it is in the court, what we can do is, the Minister will take your contacts, and then he'll go, we can make a follow-up for you.
Thank you.
But I can assure you, just like you said, it could be one rotten potato can actually spoil the whole bank.
Believe it is that, that's what my...
But with all honesty, I'm Gambian, and that is very un-Gambian, the Afri-Gambian actually doesn't involve those things. But again, that's life, and I want to sincerely apologize and to assure you that the Minister is here, and we're gonna take it up, because seven years is too long, and like they said, justice has taken too long.
My first lawyer, for three years, he booked, he connected with my, with the other man, so they went against me to take my property. I figured out that lawyer, he had sixteen farms around in Gambia.
Yeah.
How did he get that one, or all those? So then, I got even my half my money back that I gave my lawyer, so...
So, so we will, we will take videos with the Minister, and then we can make a follow-up with you.
Yeah.
And I can also say that for investment in the Gambia, we have a special department or unit called the Gambia Investment and Export Promotion Agency, that's where we normally advise people to start with, because this is a government agency, and they can actually direct you, they can also guide you.
It's Gaipa.
Gaipa, yeah.
I'm there.
Gaipa, yeah, Gaipa, exactly, yeah. So, so they were able to guide you with all the investment that you want to do in the Gambia, and also in case you want to maybe also expand, and so they can also give you a lot of guidance, and also about what the law says about every aspect of what you want to do. So I'm assuring that the Gaipa, actually, they are in the right place and they are in the right position, because these are people that actually, I worked with when I was in the private sector, because I came from the private sector personally, as a business person before I went into government. So, so I worked more in the private industry than actually in the government, only for the past few years, when I was a Member of Parliament. So I can tell you, Gaipa would be able to help assist anybody that really want to invest in the Gambia, instead of doing it on an individual basis, which sometimes there are risks, just like what you actually experienced, but I just want to apologize to you, to let you know that that is very un-Gambian, and every Gambia actually, yeah, we have our own brothers and sisters here, but that's very un-Gambian. But we will take note, and we'll ensure that we make a follow-up with you.
Lovely.
Because you know, like, me being in Parliament, when something actually is in the courts, normally we are barred from, so we make the laws, yeah, but the Minister should be able to do that, yeah. So, and I just also want to respect the law, so I don't do or say anything that may jeopardize anything, because we make the laws that is going to actually assist anybody, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Actually, the gentleman that he's referring is actually a Gambian Norwegian, so somebody that most of us know in the community very well, and we would have thought that he was very, very respected, unfortunately, when that...
Yeah, I just want to add to what Johan is saying, Johan did contact us when he started Gambia House, and when he did the presentation and saw his business, investment in Gambia, it's a huge poultry farm actually, employing lots of Gambians, and in fact, they gave him a Gambia name, you see the kids on the street, and...
Musa.
Musa, yeah, so he was really doing a lot of creating jobs for young people in the beach, and young people just going around, which was very impressive, but it was unfortunate when a year or two after, we just start hearing the challenges he's having in the Gambia, of course, we couldn't do much, because we were told we don't even, we don't understand his situation in the Gambia, so it was out of our hand, but he had really done a lot, and profile Gambia in the media here as well, in our documentary, I mean, and it was just unfortunate situation as well.
He was the success story, we all went to him, I remember. So we were using him as a front to get more investors in, so it's so unfortunate that he went down, yeah. The Queen Mother.
Well, Musa, I'm very sorry to hear about his story, and these are the people who have to, to be honest, there are so many people that don't, that don't even hear the name Africa. And if we get investors like him, who are, who want to invest in Africa, and then he's met with such obstacles, very, very unfortunate. And I know a country like Norway, we have lived here for many years, and we know, I think this is the best country in the world. Not, I'm not saying economically or whatever, but definitely the way we are met here, and we feel, we have a lot of freedom, we can say anything, we can move anywhere, so this is very unfortunate, because we want to shape our continent, and the only way to shape our continent is to have investors, so at least those dictators we have there, because they don't think about it any further, they just think for themselves. And so if we get investors, we should try to promote them and try to become so that they can penetrate in Africa, because I can see now, there are a lot of Europeans coming down there. We have our neighbors at Mombasa, and I guess the area where I am, are more Europeans than even the ones we have here. So you see, that's why they are coming there, and we work together and try to be, you know, like brothers and sisters, that's many years, we can proceed. You have a very challenging ministry, because you mentioned about information, and our Minister here, you have been in Sweden before you went back to Gambia, and I really have pictured a few people who decided to go back to our beautiful continent, and Gambia is one of the most beautiful countries in Africa. So, when we come to the freedom of speech, because in Kenya before, the press had a lot of problems, because they could not, they could not report in anything, they found that because of dictatorship, they were not allowed, and they were really destroyed, I mean, their materials were destroyed, they didn't have freedom to express themselves. So how do you face these challenges? Because information, that's why I'm saying it's the most crucial ministry, because you are giving the information, not only to Gambia, the whole of, the whole world are focusing on this information you are giving. What freedom do you have in Gambia, you think this? Well, if it is too much on the government, we are not going to put it there, yeah, we talk behind the, under the table. How do you think the freedom of speech down there is regarded?
The last scorecard that was out, in terms of press freedom, Gambia has jumped from almost fifty to something, number five, in the conference. What happened was that for twenty-two years, from nineteen ninety to twenty sixteen, there was no press freedom. In fact, it was dangerous to be a journalist in Gambia. At least we are killed, they were forced to disappear, they were persecuted, they were beaten total, and we had only one TV station, and a purely radio station. And but since the President is excellent, a number of people power, we have seen a huge improvement in media freedom, in press freedom, but also in people's freedom to speak their minds. Now we have over thirty-eight commercial radio stations, including the, excluding the commentary radio stations. And now we have so many online TVs, all of them proliferated after twenty sixteen. Now the media is free, people speak their mind, in fact, sometimes we even think it's too much. Yes, we think it's, it's, some people say that it's too much, because people say whatever they want to say, to an extent of, in fact, insulting everyone, to the extent of saying things that are not very normal, because of the freedom there. So nobody is being persecuted anymore, the media is free, journalists operate freely, we have more online media now operating, more newspapers, more TV, more radios, more journalists. So for us, to be honest, if one thing that we can freely say is the legacy of a sexy president, it's press freedom. Now it is, I don't see, you cannot market anywhere, any continent, to be honest, compared to what we had before and now, so that's different. So on that front, I give the government anti-lose.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, and if I can also add something on the, on the, this law that we have to act fast as a Member of Parliament. If you look at the Gambia, the Criminal Code, which was since nineteen thirty-three, has recently been upgraded, and all the draconian laws, most of them have been removed from the law. So that law passed last May, and it was settled by the President. Now, if you look at the nineteen thirty-three law, we've been using until recently, and most of the laws that you see, a lot, quite a lot, because Gambia was colonized by the British. So those laws actually, particularly in relation to freedom of people, was meant to kind of like cage people, so that they will not be able to manifest when things actually go on. So we've realized that in the Parliament, even though it took us almost five years to be able to change, but finally we were able to change those laws, and some of those draconian laws that we have in the Criminal Code actually have been removed completely, and now, because we live in a democratic society, and all those things which are going to help people to be, to be more free, to be able to express themselves, would have actually been running foul of the law. So that's what actually we have done. It took us almost five years to change, but we have done it. So with the, the old laws, we was, we call it colonial laws, we've actually removed from our Criminal Code, now we have something that is more Gambian, that is more African, and also gives people the opportunity to be able to freely do things, which ordinarily would have been a crime for somebody to do. And addition to that, we've measured now, the police officers, when they even arrest anybody, three things is going to happen. They will have to tell you first, why are you being arrested? Number two, they will tell you also that you have a right to have a lawyer, and you also have to notify your family that you have been arrested, and before that was not happening. Before you'll be arrested, they will look around all over the police stations, and say, oh, he's over there, then you five minutes ago. Now, in the laws that actually has to stop, and the police, I'm sure they'll be trained to know that these are some of the steps that you have to take, so that we are in line with the international standards, where somebody gets arrested, you will know straightaway, why are you being arrested, wherever you are taking the vehicle, I'm being taken to this police station, or that other police station. So we've changed a lot of things in our laws now.
Thank you. We'll continue. I think we go on to the Gambian Association before we come to Payne, and they, they is the one going to speak last today.
No, I'm not.
Gambian Association, Tony and Noah. Yeah, Tony, both of you should say something.
Just to declare, I am not a victim in the Gambian Association, but I am a volunteer.
Okay.
So Noah should do that.
Yeah, but you can talk them on behalf of the Christian...
My brother is shy, I would give you a...
Okay.
Then I can say on behalf of the Gambian Association, and the parents of the Gambia and the Gambia, and welcome you, both of you, and I was lucky to know you, and in another context than you expected when I came, when I was coming. It's delighted to see the development that is happening in the Gambia, when it comes to press, that's your field, and freedom of speech. I normally term myself revision, which is not wrong, I still term, though my Gambia heritage is intact, and once it ever, always the Gambia. So that, that said, I would definitely like to see the development that is being expressed now, that is being experienced, to continue. I hope we have the opportunity, because it's always easy to start something, but to get it sustainable, that's where I think from. And I think part of it, which I've, I've brought some of your press specifics, whatever it's called.
Myself.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you know, this, this, this idea of enlightening the masses, it has a very great effect. The more people, the more enlightened people are, the more, the more you can be challenged, but at the same time, the more, the more, I mean, you can go on. We say, we say in the English language, knowledge is power, and that's true, so continue that with that spirit. You might face challenges, because people would go out of track to distract you, but full focus and safe approach.
Do you want to respond to anything?
Yeah, it's a, it's a general comment.
Yeah.
It's an encouragement. But one thing I can assure you that, in second, as the President has always emphasized, the need to leave a legacy where our democracy is consolidated. Like I said, these are the parameters of democracy, press freedom, freedom of speech, association, accountability, and that is what we promote. We have, we want to leave a legacy, that this is going to be the most transparent government in the history of the country, and we've strengthened every institution that promotes that. We've brought in all the laws, like I said, the ATI and access to information law, we have the anti-corruption law, which is passed already, the Commission has, I think, will be sworn in very soon. We have strengthened national republics, we have performed the procurement laws, Central Bank Act, the public-private partnership, laws have all been reformed, because Gambia is in a period of reform. When a country goes through decrease of continuity, everything stops. There are no laws, there are no institutions, only one man who decides. So when you take over from that, you inherit a system with this best of, and sometimes we can impatience as a country, but I understand, because the society moves faster than the state, particularly in democracy, society has expectations, but the state sometimes is bound by bureaucracy. Democracy goes with bureaucracy and the rule of law, and if you want the state to function, it has to function in that place. Sometime where the citizens want to move faster, and sometime where impatience, but government understands that, that is why we try to ensure that we have an open line of communication with the citizens. That is why every, at least four times in the week, I'm on the radio, four times in the week, I'm on the radio in the mornings, where I do half an hour, government updates in different languages, and open the lines, the next half an hour, but you want to call, call and tell, somebody will call from Pachar and say, you know what, we have X, Y, Z problems as farmers. I'll take note, I'll contact the minister, I'll go, hey, these guys have called from this place, this is their challenge, and we'll act on it. So I do this four times in the week, and like you said, the amount of work, I will do once every three weeks, we bring a set of ministers with its entirety, come and face the public, tell the public what you are doing. We do the press conference, where we bring the NDA, so come and tell the public what they are doing. All this is their towards, and so the public is fully aware of what the government is doing, because it is public money we are spending. We have a responsibility toward the public, for them to know exactly what we are doing. So thank you for the encouragement, and I can assure you that we'll continue on this part, and that will not change.
And, and just adding to that, all of this was affected when Dr., I mean, when Honorable Dr. Ishmael Asise came into the Ministry. Payne, her team, I think it's important, you tell him the important work we're doing, and how Ka in Switzerland is a friend to our network, isn't he?
Professor Ka.
Yes, Professor Ka, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Republic of the Gambia, yeah, in Geneva, yeah.
Well, I have, first, I can tell some about the Pan-African Action Network in Norway, through and to Payne. We are working to promote the second decade now, for people African descent, second international decade that came through this year early, and also, that's our main focus, and also focusing on, we had a working group of experts of people African descent visiting in twenty twenty-three, which I organized the meetings, and we have a report with fifty recommendations that the Norwegian government are quite, they are not technic, if this is to come, they are, have been criticizing the method, the methodology of doing, even expert group, that's the same, I'll get every expert group, of course. I hope actually that Gambia will be able to follow up on that report, because several incidents, and the gravest incidents in that case, with children of, actually, Gambia descent being called police on while in school, while reacting to racism. I've talked with General Manas, well, in Geneva, about this, so we can probably brief you on the report, because I think it's important that Gambia also reacts, several more great incidents in the report, there was two of them, either Gambia citizens, several of them, or people of Gambia descent, so I think that's important, for the Norwegian government to be quite neglecting, ignoring this report. The other thing we are, of course, working on is the second decade of people African descent, with the same, for promotion, recognition, justice, and development, but also the reparations that, I guess you as a AU parliament member, are interested in, especially this year, with the era of reparations, and we're also working towards that, I'm also working with the European Network on that issue. So I hope you can discuss the issues of reparations, and maybe exchange context later to discuss that particular aspect, and also that, as we need the push from the African Union, the African Parliament, and African states, that this decade has to be something, that it's actually something that should be pushed, the last decade was totally ignored, involves all over the world, except for the foreign and foreign meetings, where I'm attending, mainly with Canada and Ireland, that adapted in the first decade. So we need to make this decade, well, something that makes, can reunite the Pan-African movement as well. So we need to make this decade, well, something that makes, can reunite the Pan-African movement as well. Uh, it was very fortunate that this decade ended up as the last decade, being for people African descent outside of Africa. All to the diaspora and on the continent that was promoted, that is, I know the character was promoted and also hoped that, I think that was a difficult bit. I'd also hope that, uh, we can have a discussion at some point about the twenty seats at the African Parliament. That we are supposed to take as the diaspora. It's also important that the diaspora is included in Africa.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Hatim. Well said.
I can, I can respond to, um, the, um, because, um, sometime this year, the Pan-African Parliament in January, where I'm the special advisor to the Speaker of the Parliament. We signed an M O U with SWAT, SWAT is the state of the African diaspora, which consists of over two hundred million people. Um, their prime minister visited us and also the speaker, um, was supposed to come, but he did not come. But the prime minister actually did visit us and we were able to sign an M O U. And among the M O U actually, some of the things we're going to work together, a preparation is part of it. We know that this year the African Union, I'm aware, they're doing a lot with actually reparations. And we are going to use them because they have some experience in fact, they have assisted Benin, um, to get some of the artifacts that were actually stolen and taken away from Benin. The Gambia government also has recognized that also we have the same situation and, uh, they are gone, but we've, we've tried to locate them and they want to assist them. But what they do is like, they came through the Pan-African Parliament and one of the requirements is actually, um, they will, because of the laws we have right now, which we call it, uh, the Constitutive Act of the African Union, we created the Pan-African Parliament as an organ. Um, to get those twenty seats in the parliament now would not be possible unless the laws change, exactly. So what we are doing now is together, we want to, um, maybe lobby the heads of state, lots of, um, it's like a constitution of a country. So the only people that could change is actually assembling heads of state at the, in, in Addis. So once that's actually done, we've chosen the, the path that they can go to together actually change. But us as members of parliament of the African Union, we welcome them with both hands and we think the diaspora needs to be represented at the level of African Union, particularly at the African Parliament where we can discuss issues related not only to people on African continent, but people outside African continent. So we are ready to work together and already we have the, um, the, 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 the M O U. Uh, and I was the, um, contact person until they arrive in South Africa, we will decide the M O U and we're going to start the work from there. In fact, as of last week, they even call, um, there are two bills they want to discuss with us that they want to create for the African diaspora. One related to health and one related to finance, if I remember right. So when we get there to South Africa next week, um, in two weeks' time actually, we'll be able to, um, come back together. But we really, really recognize the importance of the diaspora and this SWAT, which is the state of the African in the diaspora, we are working very closely with them. So that, um, we, perhaps we'll see in contacts and then I will let you know. Maybe when we, we want to organize something in the, in the, in the Pan-African Parliament in South Africa, whatever, from this year, um, that will recognize, um, the, the African in the diaspora, to see what we can do together when, when, when we come, because, um, your contributions to the entire continent actually is felt. So, so I think now is time for the work that's been done by this diaspora to be really recognized at the level of African Union. Not only talking, but actually, you know, practicalizing really what we are saying there.
Uh, we'll be organized from the African Union, because we have had some, yes, different organizers trying to do something about it here in Europe and elsewhere. Yes, it's quite chaotic last year.
Exactly. In fact, we've, we've seen that, um, in fact, uh, once we sign the M O U with SWAT, then we have some other, um, organizations also coming to try to present themselves. But again, you know, I'm, you know, diplomatically, you can only deal with maybe the one that the person actually recognize. So, so that's a little easier, but we, we work to it just to ensure that we do for the benefit of everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Shilfo, as a woman, you have the honorable Mrs. right in front of you and the parliamentarian.
Exactly.
That can do something about the courting of women in the Gambia. I'm going to be really, I'm going to be really diplomatic, what do you have to say to them, face to face now? Now you're talking for all of the women of the Gambia. So you have nothing to say, huh?
I can elaborate on that.
Thank you, please, thank you.
It's part of my culture and, uh, I sincerely hope that it's, um, being taken seriously for the, I know it is, it is presently. But we know, um, that certain roots in culture are difficult to, to, to move.
Yeah.
And continuing, uh, I mean, engaging our own women, because I think according to my experience, it's mostly women who, who carried those, um, practices. So engaging them, we keep continuing to sort of respect, but I hope that that practice stops.
Yeah.
I want to see the opportunity to just, um, um. Also, I, also, I feel it, but I, I want to say for us, I feel it, it can be there.
With me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, for, as I, I think, I think it's, it's, it's a shame to, to, to hear somebody irrespective of where, irrespective of where you come from, where you belong. We pass it to all, have experience being due by, um.
A friend.
Yeah, so, so, so I hope justice, justice takes its course and then we get, uh, at the, at the, then by the side of the script.
Yeah.
What will, uh, next for that? Like you said, we make a follow-up.
Yeah.
We'll exchange.
No problem.
As a government, we are very concerned when we hear this kind of thing and that we want to protect investors.
Because I can, I can add to this that since I've been working with investors for years in different situations, a lot of people would like to help Gambia, but they're afraid.
Yeah.
So that is why we're here to assure you that we have laws in place.
Yeah.
That protect investors.
Yeah, good.
Um, because as a country, we want to promote F D I, we want people to come and invest in the country. So whatever we can do to support that, we will do it. And this case, it's unfortunate, um, we wish it did not happen, but we'll do everything we can to make sure that justice is served in this one. So I'll probably make a follow-up when I return. Now on the issue of F D M, I think we've always made it very classic of them. And our question was very clear, that we will not, and we don't want to repeal this law. As a democratic country, we must follow democratic processes. I mean, it was a lawmaker who took it to parliament, process must be followed. Now, what, as a government also, we're aware of one thing, quotas are not only changed by law, they're also changed through education. So in a, what are the laws are there and you have a government that is not receptive to changing that law, you don't know what happens tomorrow. If you have a government that want to change it, they will change it.
Hmm.
Well, as a government, we don't want to change it, I will not change it as far as we are concerned. But we need to have concerted efforts to educate the people, more than only women, also men. And young people from school to know this is a bad practice, it's a bad culture, you mustn't throw it away. If you educate the population and the population themselves shun the practice, no matter what kind of law you bring there, the practice will not change. But if the people are not educated enough to understand the bad practice, even if you bring in the laws, it is not the practice that they're practicing. And it is called, so I think what I think the two-point approach. The first approach is to enter the law and robots, so there are strong enforcement of activities to ensure that people who are concerned of breaking the law and regulations.
Hmm.
That's been provided by, and the same that goes to which is educate the public about the dangers of this practice. It's a bad call and that has to be across the board, even young children, because they grow up to either practice it or become big things. So I think it has to go together with educating, uh, but also government alone cannot do that. We need to work together with the whole society, not a single one, to make sure that we have a, a kind of initiative to enlighten the population about the dangers of this.
Uh, about, about this F D M, um, I just, it just came to me that maybe, um, having, uh, whether I listen to the Gambia, why not having a group also in Gambia? Or, uh, having a group in Gambia that will speak out, bring out, uh, like, speak about the danger in the F D M and how much it affects their girls and when they grow up throughout their life. This is some, this is, it's like, it has this psychological effect on the, on the children and their, and their entire life. It affects them in the end, it affects their generation. And this, this, this will go on and go on and go on. So what are we doing? We are destroying the entire generation in the future, you know, in, and it goes a very, in a very long run. But what I think, uh, my idea to the government that is that why not, um, uh, implementing F D M as a core course in the, in the education system? So that it will be a course that will be, like, the children will get this education through it and through parents meeting and stuff, they also, they also be introduced to this. So parents will know, I can't allow my child to go through that. And maybe, uh, they will also understand the consequences, because they, they themselves could tell what they experienced if they have gone through the same thing. You understand? I don't know if it's a good idea or not, but, uh.
It's a good idea.
Uh, speaking, speaking in public and speaking it out will not help, because whatever will happen in the dark will happen and you will not have any, like, any knowledge about it.
Yeah, yes, in, in fact, um, we need to cut the, the law on F D M. Uh, in fact, there is a gap, because, um, for example, if somebody do it in the Gambia, it's illegal, but what about, how about when you go across Senegal? Across the border, it's an issue, it's a customer. In fact, that's, some, they want to do, some they want to do, exactly, and you go to Senegal, do that, then you come back. Now, how do you prosecute that kind of person? We've seen the gap, but I think what we are also seeing, sensitization also in the school and everywhere, I think is important. In fact, just two weeks ago, I wrote a paper that, um, at the level of the university, and I didn't read the last paragraph, I, I had my conclusion. I said the fact that F D M C is more of a cultural practice and not a religious one, its eradication will take time and it has been diluted in the culture of those that practice it. It may take a generational, generational sensitization towards its elimination, but its elimination is necessary to protect human dignity as those that undergo it, uh, most, for the most part, do not have the capacity to consent, to say yes or no. I am, this is my personal opinion, of the view that it is absolutely necessary to eliminate it. However, for those that think it's religious or cultural, um, right to do so, they may be able to do that once they reach the age of eighteen, if they have to do that. Like we have seen it said earlier, um, they buy it, but they said, if you are eighteen, you want to do it, go ahead, you know? So, so for me, I think, uh, it's more of a culture than actually a religion, because we've consulted a lot of, um, Islamic schools. Um, you know, there's a difference among themselves, but for the most part, most of them say, no, it's not actually necessary, because of the Prophet Muhammad. Even though he knew it was being done during his time, he has never asked anybody to practice it. He has never encouraged anybody to practice it and that is, that is clear. And none of his people, his family actually has undergone it. So I think the sensitization, I think is more, um, particularly in the younger generation, I think eventually it's gonna, it's gonna end, but it will take some time. That one, that one we know.
So human rights.
Human rights, yeah, yeah. Now, even if you look at the constitution of the Gambia, on section twenty-one, it's telling you, people must not go, undergo any human treatment. That's section twenty-one and it's, um, it's one of the Bill of Rights and it's also, um, a section that's entrenched, which means I cannot even change it. It's going to take, even though entire country to change. So that tells you the importance that they put on human dignity and on the human rights, um, in the current constitution that we have. So, but I think together we can keep to do the sensitization and, uh, just keep doing that, but I'm sure in the long run, you're going to see that it's going to actually, it's going to hold out. So that's, that's, that's what I'm, yeah.
Okay, we, we're on the right path. We move on because we don't have a lot of time and we still have a few people who haven't said a word. Uh, Nimma hasn't said, Lamins wishes to speak, Enid hasn't spoken. And I would just want to acknowledge Dr. Joseph, uh, the basic internet, the one that donated the internet that we still. Because of fifteen thousand dollars, the government still has not been able to get that money.
Hmm. But is it a government initiative or the government initiative?
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm, uh, and I, I very much liked your input. Uh, my name is Joseph Noll, I'm professor at the University of Oslo and I'm the leader of Digital Global Health at the Center for Global Health. And, uh, uh, as, as from, if you give me a minute?
Yeah.
And, and from our background, we have, uh.
Do you have more cards?
I have more. Okay, I give you all my cards. This is, this is the typical, uh, wom- a woman from Gambia whom you have empowered once and then, once you give her the small finger, you have lost completely. Now, what I, um, um, we are working with sixteen countries in, in Africa to actually say, uh, the, the issue of F D M is in a total issue of what do we do with health? What do we do with the stigma of menstruation? We know that early childhood marriage often ends up, uh, a girl, um, being ma- becoming mother at the age of eleven, has a lot more problems than when the body is actually experienced to give birth. So what we put on our, uh, on our background is the question, are we able to bring a health education package to the schools as part of the whole digital transformation of schools? So how can we connect schools and community and then bring as part of that one, a health package? So that not necessarily teachers who are afraid of talking about, uh, menstruation, talking about F D M, talking about topics, uh, but that mentors can go together with the girls and the boys and then teach about, say, hey, menstruation is absolutely normal. So the, the, the story, I'd love to spend a bit more time with you later on, uh, would be to see what is the pathway of saying, hey, our children, we need to get our children into the digital world, because otherwise they don't have the capabilities of having a life where they can economically survive. And as part of that, once we think about digital, then it's easy to also think about bringing health into the picture. I stop here, I'm a professor, so I talk for forty-five minutes. And to talk about the basic internet foundation, I got the university, which is a very slow-moving vehicle, to then start the foundation to have the quick reaction on the ground and make the practical work. So that's the background.
Hmm. Did you want to say something or can Lamins say something?
No, I mean, I want to know more about the project, because I understand that the project has been stalled for some reason.
Uh, we, we shipped it, uh, down to the Gambia and, uh, I, I tell you, now on Friday, we are launching with the first operator in, in Africa. Uh, the Vodacom Tanzania Foundation, the unlimited data for schools. Uh, no, no data cap for just twenty-two dollars a month. Where we then tell, okay, we need the schools or communities to generate twenty dollars. So it's not for free, but it's at the, at a price which costs for the schools and the community, but it also costs for the telecom operators, because they don't give you normally, uh, a twenty-dollar package with unlimited data. They will ask you eighty dollars, hundred, twenty dollars or whatever that is.
They'll go out of business.
No, they, they don't, because, uh, the example we have from Tanzania and from Kenya is actually that, uh, once you empower the community and make a spot where you empower people to see the value of digital, the take-up of mobile data will happen. There is a delay, but it's often the question of, you know, why should I use the internet? What is the internet? It's technology. I don't, I'm not a technologist. I don't, I don't need the internet. So that has been, we, we have, sorry, we have been asked by the G S M A, the G S M Association, uh, which is the Association of All Mobile Operators, to, uh, give them an answer on why do we see that three out of four in Africa, south of Sahara, don't buy mobile internet? And the number one answer is price, price, price. But then there was a lot also of, I don't see the value. So we've seen this dramatic gap between those who have the internet, who can live without the internet, and those who don't have the internet and don't see the value of it. Uh, and that is typically also a gender gap. Sorry, I'm, I'm talking too much, professor here.
In Gambia, six, seven percent of Gambia have internet access.
Yeah.
Even though you can question it, it, it points at it. It costs, it really costs, about thirty, thirty percent are connected. That's the penetration rate. Uh, but I'm more interested about this particular project that you mentioned, the digital project.
Yeah.
I need to know more about it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll connect you, we'll connect.
Yeah, I don't want to spoil your, your meeting here, but, uh.
No, I mean, obviously, um, we're in the digital age.
Absolutely.
No country now can transform without both digital, digital transformation.
Thanks, yes.
And I think that is why we as a government take it very seriously. In fact, the Ministry of Communications and Communication Infrastructure was one. Because of the government seeing digital transmission as a priority, we unbundled the ministry into.
Okay.
We have a ministry responsible for digital economy and communication.
Yeah.
And one responsible for information and media, it used to be one ministry. And we also created an agency called J I T, the Gambia I C T Agency. Their role is to show with full power, it's an act of parliament. Their own institutional, with full power, it's an act of parliament, created by a. Who passed to implement all ICT related projects.
Okay.
And we've done also investments in ICT.
Wonderful.
Um we've also brought in frame, law, legal frameworks, and you can tell it, national ICT transformation strategy is there. We've got the data protection and privacy laws which are coming, December security laws upcoming. We also change the legal instruments, because these are the, this is important. You cannot do the transformation if you don't have the security and the. And we're also investing through public-private partnerships in the infrastructure, because it's important, the backbone uh as well. And we've also done some deregulation. Before it was a monopoly, only Gambia was the main player, now we're part of the market. Now we have at least five licensed GSM operators. For a population of two-point-five million.
Hmm.
Our neighbor Senegal is about seventeen million, I think, if I'm wrong in population, there are only three GSM operators. It shows how seriously we take digital transformation.
Hmm.
And bringing it to education is vital. Now, education has changed. The notion of a classroom will disappear at some point. There'll be no, there'll be, there'll be no physical space called a school. But we are moving online, and now unfortunately, whether we like it or not. The transformations are so quick that we hardly catch up with AI, deep tech, and all these things coming up. We need to be prepared as a society for that. And and that is why we have integrated digital education into the school curriculum. And I was touched when we went to Bolibana, Bolibana is the last village in Gambia. When they had to open a school, like the president, who initiated it, built about twelve classrooms there. And I saw a computer up there, with computers, and I believe that is, that is the last, the last village there. So it shows how serious we are in terms of digital transformation. But we're still looking for partners, because uh like I always argue, government cannot do this alone.
I agree.
Government sets policies, but I think the investments are brought in by the private sector. The knowledge is brought in by the private sector. So we are open to discussions to partner with anybody who is interested and invested in this sector.
Hmm.
Well, the basic internet will write an MOU that your government will sign now, okay? This time, this time.
That's right, I I just wanted to add something. In fact, when I look at the his card, Professor, digital transformation and empowerment. Um coincidentally, I work in the technology field uh for the past twenty-five years in the US and also in Gambia now. Now, right now, we are here in Norway, in the Listeron, on the Global Internet Governance Forum.
And I hope you in the very welcome, when you come in, you see that slide saying Norway and the internet. That is, that's our stand.
Exactly, now.
Uh so so there we can, there we can, I can show you the details of the implementation and then discuss with you. Eh to what degree that is applicable. Uh okay, so.
Yes, and then um in the um on on Thursday, um there's a policy network called Policy Network on Meaningful Access, PMMA. On the global internet, and in fact, I'm the chairperson of the of this policy network. Where I encourage, what do we do to close that gap between the connected and the unconnected? And this is global, it's not only about Africa, it's not only about Gambia, but globally, that what we actually do. So on Thursday, um we've brought in about six, seven different countries. That's gonna show us exactly what they have done in their countries, from India, um from Pakistan, um what they have done to close that gap. Particularly in rural communities where global, uh where they call it community networks actually is coming up. Particularly in Tanzania, there are some very good community networks going on. Now, in the Gambia, um the issue, there's a, there's still a gap, you know, just like we have Gambia and the other western countries, there's a gap.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, within the country, there's a gap in terms of the connected and the unconnected. And the most important is the infrastructure and also the cost of 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 data. Now, what we've encouraged the government to do, because if you look at the Communication Act of two thousand nine. Parliament has asked the government to implement a service call, um they call the service um universal service phone. What that phone is going to do, which is going to collect it from the operators, is going to put the phone together and then create avenues for the unconnected. To be able to connect them. Because the operators, they they want profit, they want money. So if they're Bolibana, they will not go there, because they don't know, oh, they will not even go to collect it. So they will not have any interest of country to collect this people, that's where I came from as a as a village boy. Now, we asked the government to create this phone and then be able to go and invest in those areas. So that these business people can actually use those towers, use that infrastructure, and to give to the population at a lower price compared to those in the capital. So that's exactly what the government intends to do, and I think the minister, um the last time I spoke to him, about a month ago, is on track to activate that. Um so that the people where the the operator would not go, government will go and install and then find. Now, the other aspect the government is doing also, they call it co-location. You know, if you go to most African countries, you see towers, towers all over the place, everybody's running your own tower.
Except Tanzania, of course.
Tanzania, exactly, same. Because now they do, they have this policy called co-location, infrastructure sharing, where.
Even even service sharing, that you have one radio link and all operators on that radio link.
So all that, we we believe, when when done, the policy is already there. So when it is done, you're gonna see that it's gonna help to reduce the cost of operations. Because these operators, they have to make money, nothing else, you know, they are not NGO. So so the government already already understand and knows that gap, and they're working towards that. So the policy is already there, and Parliament, like, I'm the chair of the ICT company in Gambia. So I'm encouraging them to activate that that phone, where they help the um the businesses so that they can build those and to make it more affordable and all that. But we'd be interested to see you in our in our thing tomorrow, where we discuss um the network.
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, sorry, Thursday. Yeah, but I've seen.
But we can we we can meet tomorrow, uh at the stand or or anywhere in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, I had a wonderful speech eloquently regarding both areas. You want the investors to come and invest in the Gambia. Uh for my thing, like my brother, being looted, I could say, it's not only Gambians, people in Daispor are all complaining about the same thing. Most of us here are good artists, so that you have your, you sell your property, you say, let me go and invest in the Gambia. You send a container before you leave, the whole container disappears. So it happened to me, here and then away, running my most media for so long. We send a container, trying to start our own TV and radio, we bought equipment, some from the United States, some from here and sending it to Gambia. I went there, we rent a wood compa, built, changed everything inside, even the Minister of Information.
Still went there, he went to the studio.
He was amazed, he kept that equipment that was there.
Yeah, my most dear brother.
Yeah, all our equipment is gone, the whole thing disappeared.
They stole everything.
Some are in Tanzania, some are in uh Guinea Bissau.
And 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 we and we gave, and we gave, we made a Gambian, the CEO, Bory Touré. And he just sold all our equipments to a Ghanaian.
Yeah, it disappeared.
And then he disappeared with everything, with our whole studio, drones, everything.
My thing is, whether the Parliament or the Minister, they could put economic security that investors that are coming in can feel like. Now I'm going to invest in the Gambia, I know I'll be protected. You have to find a way out, there are so many people who want to invest in Apple, but this is the constraint or the problem many are feeling. Because investors know, we talk together, we ask, hey, I want to invest, man, if I want to advise you, be careful. And this is why the government is going to find it difficult, because like you said, the government can do this alone. So if there's not a structure that will protect people that are coming to invest, it will be very difficult to convince people with the money to come and invest. It's going to be local and that's going to take a long time.
I understand the situation.
Hmm.
But also, I think, if you show me one person who has invested in Gambia and has failed because she or she's been duped. I can show you five who are invested and have succeeded.
We're just lucky with the people we choose.
So so sometimes, what the government can do is to make sure there are laws and there is enforcement of those laws. Now, when you come, who you deal with, who dupes you, government has very little to do with that. And normally, people are close to everyone who dupes you, your family, your friends, these are the people you trust. What can government do about that? Because when you are transacting with that person, government wasn't there, government wasn't involved. What government can do is, if you feel that you are duped, it goes to the law, the government can make sure laws are. But for that, before that, that period where you trust someone, you give him your equipments, and you come and you come back here. I advise people, don't go and invest and leave it there and go on a city in Norway. It will, it it's difficult, those who succeeded, when they are sat there. And live like anybody else, I wouldn't advise anybody to buy all this expensive equipment. Ship it to Gambia, come and sit in Norway and think that that guy will run it for you, he will not. He will not, I can tell you that.
And 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 just to, um before I return to the Gambia from the United States also, the same situation. Um I had serious issues with my equipment as well, because I'm a computer engineer, uh but it was my own family members, actually. So then I decided to stay on my own, and since that time, actually, things are working fine. Because currently, I have about twenty-one or twenty-two employees working for me for the past ten, fifteen years, but I'm there on the ground in the Gambia. So so you're gonna see that, I think all of us, one way or the other, you must have to experience this kind of thing, because I'm, for the most part, it's your family members, you know. Mine in particular was was the same situation with a family member. But then when I realized, actually, you know what, I can't be going back and forth, I have to stay and then put my eye on what I'm actually doing.
But even that, even that sad.
It's unfortunate.
Yes.
It's unfortunate, because of when 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 I develop, of course, my family, it was automatically, they will also the same thing. But for them, they were looking at only self, for while I was looking at the, you know, the the bigger picture. So um it's very unfortunate that the the kind of mentality we have, um you can get rich just overnight, you have to offer it.
The most painful part was my billboards, I had beautiful billboards and banned you one of my pictures, they destroyed everything. That's what obsessed me, not even the equipment, my picture, my face.
But but I think, I I think when we go to um to Guyana for investment, I think you'll be most likely in the safer hands, which is the government having. Um that's called Guyana Gambia Investment and Investment Agency. Um where, you know, they will help you to ensure that you do just every single thing, and even also the insurance, et cetera, et cetera. They'll be able to assist to ensure that you set up your business and you have, you know, been protected by law, et cetera, et cetera. So but individuals, um for me, I have bad experience with that, with all honesty, even with my family, but, you know, that's that's what it is.
I think I think it's time for us to have a serious discussion of these issues. Clearly, when there's a problem, government has to find a solution.
Hmm.
Now, I think it's time for us to bring all the stakeholders, that's for Guyana, the industry of trade and industrial. To sit and discuss and find a solution to this, so that those who want to come and invest, there should be mechanisms that you can be protected. It's a problem, so we identify the problem and propose a solution. When you go back and engage Guyana, engage the minister, to see what we can do, the next step is to organize a forum. Where we sit and think together, what do we do to ensure that if.
Gambia has.
They wants to come and invest in Gambia.
I've already invested my stories.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
For for example, what can we do to make sure that, you know, you are you are protected? At least, at least, these are the questions that we should have. For me, I was I was I was lucky, um I never invested in anything, yeah? When I save some money, I said, no, let me educate myself. Because if you send stuff to Gambia, they can, what, when you educate yourself?
They can take it away.
They cannot take it away, you die, they cannot even harass you. They they very rigid, but if you leave your properties behind, they will struggle for your property very hard. So I never invested, I, for me, was, no, I don't want to invest in business, other than business. For me, I get educated and I go and work, that's it. But I feel for those who have who have bad experience.
But I have to speak Mandinka or Wolof, and I don't, to be there, and even one guy in Guyana was connected to this gangster I was involved with, that I met on my investing meeting. So I was handcuffed, in a way, I couldn't, what should I call?
Very unfortunate.
I don't speak Wolof.
The next time you will go with me, we they won't do anything to you.
I look forward to it.
I promise you that.
I just want to add to what the honorable minister is saying. I think um it's frightening if people invest and everything gets destroyed or been duped. Not all of us can go to Gambia and be there, and governments should find a solution and encourage people sitting here doing business like all of us. And of course, investors as well, who are not on Gambia, they will leave their businesses and go and sit in Gambia, because Gambia is a small country. I think the complaint we've been getting, and some of the experience ourselves have, and most of the Gambians who come to us to complain about these things. So a lot of people think that we have a solution to Gambia, except the diaspora doing business, they come to us and bring this complaint to us. It's the lack of enforcement of the law. The courts take their time, and people don't have time, you have a business here, you have a job here, you cannot be running back and forth Gambia. The lawyers, I mean, a lot of these lawyers also are not really sincere as well in these processes. So governments should create a space or make sure these laws are enforced and the empties as well. And then also the courts, don't take those times, it's like two years, three years, you're chasing something, then you give up. No, people will tell you, don't bother, you are going to waste your money, you'll pay thousands of hundred thousands of dollars, and nothing will come out of it. And also, of course, there's a lot of complaint, which is a fact as well. Sometimes, some of these people also have strong connections within the law on enforcement, which also tend to be utilized to threaten some of them. Because we saw this conversation. So I think government enforcement and also making sure the court processes don't take that long. I think that will really help, because this is not just about Gambians, we are talking about knowing Gambia, and nobody will leave your country. Gambia is small as a country to go and stay there to do business, yeah?
Yeah, have team one, thank you, Nick.
More.
Yeah.
Maybe remark about the entire discussion of difficulty investing in different countries, because it's not only Gambia. It's for both all African countries that will have the same issue. But part of that issue, I also believe, is that you want it to happen, not go into all the process that that you would have to go through here with government and everything. That would take time if you do it here, people want it to happen fast when they go to Gambia or some African country. People have actually understand that if you want those structures, the safety, everything we have to use structures, the procedures through government. As you're saying, and I think that's the most important thing to maybe enlighten investors. That if you want it to be safe, you have to go through the same procedures and processes and structures that you put in Europe. Or else you are taking a risk. And you're taking a risk that might have a big advantage, but it's a risk. That's how investments go, if you want it fast, then it's a risk. So I think that's part of that problem there, actually, to be honest. And because this happens in several other countries, Tunisia, wherever we go. If the diaspora sends money just home to build a business, it's gonna be difficult. And with same court procedures, if you have a court procedure here in Norway with some business, that has.
Can take time, it can take time, yeah.
So it's the same wherever we go.
Here is more trust, I feel more trust trusted here than in Gambia, and I was even living in Gambia for years. And I wasn't, I wasn't looking to bring the money out from Gambia, I was supposed to.
But I I I think what we need to do is what they are building.
No, no, I'm I'm ready.
The structures and more information about those structures. And maybe even trying to stop investors if they don't use the structures. Because tennis on your own rest.
But what makes Tanbi's a little bit uh uh difficulties, the fact that he didn't threaten his life? His own security, that I that's bad. That's too far.
That is not acceptable.
That's totally unacceptable.
But I think based on this discussion, uh if it's in a business of community, I mean, if I was to go to Gambia today, I just organize, create a company and do, call it a business investment management company. I mean, if people are struggling to invest, you create your company and you manage people's investments. And if I'm serious and you've got good references, anybody who wants to invest and combat, you just give them business with you, you manage it for the commission.
Yeah.
That is not existing in Gambia.
Like the real estate, now now they're doing that in the real estate also. You have people in diaspora, they come and build apartments and stuff like that, and if somebody is an agent, you pay the agent commission and then they lose everything. And then a month, six months, or one year, then you put money in your account, and then they move on.
I mean, people do it here, you give them your investment, they manage their investments for you.
Yeah.
In Gambia, we don't have that, because if you have a business, you have twenty companies that you are managing, that they have no money.
Yeah, let's go on, we don't have a lot of time again, Nimma, and then we have Engi.
I'm afford it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm too late.
We even have a question in Mandinka from the media.
Yeah, it's called Snakwandinka. Yeah. Yeah, it's okay. Engiska, we're not getting to Snakwanka. But eh, oh, Mandinka. Um, I'm gonna make a comment, maybe, um. Minister, I'm gonna, but I don't know, but I'm sorry, I'm gonna make a comment. 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 Uh so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a comment. I'm gonna make a comment. I'm gonna make a comment. I'm gonna make a comment.
Okay, but uh, let me translate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, basically, what Nima is saying, that she's totally concerned, that in the Gambia, she's seeing that in the political arena. A lot of women are used to cook, dance, sing, vote, and then when the men come into power. There's the representation is not there with the women, we're totally forgotten. So she's wondering why that's happening in the Gambia. And then her second issue is youths, she's comparing it to Norway, where the youth wings in ma- all major political parties. That vote on issues, have issues that they are concerned about, and are taken into the major wings of parties. What she's noticing is that Gambian youths are just used to come on the internet and abuse our mothers and you know what I'm trying to say? And and our, uh, uh, and and the knickers of women, do you know what I'm trying to say? Terrible things that they're saying to women on the internet instead of using them productively, so now the honorable ministers will reply.
I can answer your question.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So this, this question has two answers. One is a politic answer, one is a political answer. I'll let the honorable answer the political answer. Now, what is, what is the government has done to empower women and youths is amazing. For the first time in the history of the Gambia, we have a special ministry focusing on women issues. So it's brought in by this company. We have many initiatives that empower women. One is what they call Women Enterprise Fund, where we spend almost. No, eighty-four, eighty-four million dollars.
Direct.
Where we target women only, micro and medium enterprises owned by women to scale up their businesses. But also those who want to start a business, the government gives them money. To either start a business as women, to start a business, or to expand your business to the Women Enterprise Fund. Why would the Women Economic Empowerment Initiative, it was piloted in Kiang in fourteen thirty, where women are supported. Particularly those who are going to labor, to support them with money, to start their lives and so on and so forth. Now, all these ideas towards supporting women. When it comes to young people, what government can do is to give you the tools to succeed. Anybody who tells you, I'm going to change your life as a young person, they do. Government create the environment and give you tools, and we are giving them the tools, what are those tools, the skills? Well, the university. Twenty-five percent of those attending our own full scholarship. We just built a new university called Universal Science and Technology, where we now train homegrown engineers on full scholarship. We have built so many vocational institutes, multipurpose, one in Damban, one in Canada, one in Warsaw, one in um, Jolange. Where young people can go for free and learn any skill that they want. We are also building another specialized vocational institute today, only on features. One in Pata, only on agribusiness and is valued here. That's what the government can do, is to make sure that you, we give you the tools, it's ready to go and learn this. For many young people, unfortunately, most of them don't want to work. Most of them are in a state of waiting, waiting to go to Europe. But you wait one year, three years, you don't want to engage in politics, you don't want to look for a job, you don't want to learn a skill. All you are thinking is, I want to go to Europe. That is aspiration and actual going, sometimes there's a big gap. I mean, there's one Norwegian scholar called Carling, he wrote about this in Voluntary Immobility. That many young people in Africa find themselves in this state of waiting, you are waiting to travel. Because you are waiting to travel, you don't engage in anything and time pass is flying, you don't contribute in anything. And actually today, people are saying that the unemployment rate is high in the Gambia, it's not true, particularly for young people, it is just a chance. Because remember, not working and being unemployed are two different things. Being unemployed means that you are constantly looking for work and ready to enter the job market if there is work. But most young people are never looking for a job, that is interesting. So when they go to online, uh, when they go online to insult, I'm not seeing them. What I see in the youth wings, they are very organized across all political parties. If it's MVP, if it's GDP, NLP, CIA, I don't see them insulting. The young people I see insulting are not engaged, they are not in any political party. Uh, so I don't know, so I wouldn't blame them for that. Now, when it comes on a political, on women, why they not given the opportunity, I think it's a cultural thing. That we're doing as a government, that is why we have had a love, a special ministry now, Ministry for Women Affairs, just to change the trajectory. If you look at the number of women who contested in last year's assembly election, there was a lot of women who contested, even though they could not win. Now, what the government can do is to create a policy for women to contest, but who who votes for them, that is beyond our hand, that's a cultural thing. That's a cultural thing, and I think women also should be educated, understand that women should be given equal opportunities. There are some men who don't allow their wi- their wives to engage in into politics. They don't allow their wives to take senior positions, but I'm happy, in my sector, I'm happy, because. The most prominent media houses in Gambia are owned by women, Mamos is owned by women, Part Network by women, Part Care Park by women, VOD by women, BYFC as a woman. So in my sector, women are controlling the media. So I'm happy with that, but but this is, this is a, it's a process, we'll get there. And remember, for the past years, it's not happening, now we are opening up. And when we open up now, it's gonna take some time before we see, um, um, equal, equal opportunities.
We don't have a lot of time, so.
Yes, but you see, the the biggest question is this, um, the, most of the voters in Gambia are women. But why I don't know who, when it's women? Most of the voters, they are women, but when women contest, they don't vote for them. One of these cultural thing. Now, sometimes when you go to the political space, you see women go as just women, even like what is going on here. And 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 again, this is a thing that we really need to to change, uh, because again. Women leadership is something that's quite important and they've proven themselves from all over the country, all over the world, they've proven themselves that yes, they can. Whatever the men can do, they can also do it. But now we need to try to change the narrative, why can't you come? Because I think in twenty twenty-two or twenty there about, I cannot remember, a lady brought, in our parliament, they brought a bill. Uh, to have a reserve seat for women. Uh, yeah, uh, but the bill, the bill, the bill failed, it was from my committee, because I'm also on the committee of agenda. I don't know how I find myself there, anyway, but I'm 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 there.
You should be a privilege. It's a privileged position.
So so now, um, when the bill came, um, what, some of that, you know, sometimes we have, you know, the truth. What some members are saying, it is not the bill itself, but it's the messenger that brought the bill, if you understand what I mean. Now, as a committee, we are trying to come and as a whole, as a committee, to bring that again, as a, as a committee bill, not as individual bill. I don't know what's gonna be the outcome, uh, but um, we're gonna try, we're supposed to see that we have eight women representatives, only for women. Which means every region in the Gambia, we're gonna have one woman and that, that um, um, position cannot be controlled by a man, only women can control the position. So we want to come back to the parliament as a committee bill and bring it back, because when it came the first time, it failed. So we are giving a try a second time, so um, so you you have to support us for the, telling your family members, I tell the MPs, yes, let's get this to go through. And personally, I think can actually play a great role. Now, if you have eight additional women in the parliament, you know, you 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 know, that could make a big, big deal. Now, the issue of women in parliament particularly, is not, um, is only in Gambia or Senegal. In fact, Senegal, they're a little bit better, but if you look across the continent, it's a big issue. When you go to Kenya, they have some, um, reserves also for women only. You go to South Africa, they have, because that's the only way you can do that, to break the gap. Have a family action, we have some specially reserved seats for women only, yeah, quota system, until things become, become equal and then and then we can move. So exactly, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, the most important thing is, is that, um, when women stand out, I think it's very, very bad. When politicians at the background go and empower another woman, give her money and say, ta, let, let, let the two women, you know, insult. So the men should stop that as well, so we know what's happening. We would love to hear your voice.
Well, now you know, as usual, I'm here to talk, I'm here to listen to that.
Inge, I was, I just have to acknowledge Inge, Inge has been very vocal in bringing Gambian voices into the media. She has been a journalist, now retired, one of the main job, main newspapers in in Norway, after Boston. And she has put Gambia on the spotlight in her days on the news, on that newspaper. So we really want to say thank you so much and really acknowledge her for putting Gambia on the forefront all the time in her days. When you read often, you see Gambia there, you know that. Inge, she loves Gambia, she goes there every year, even during the impasse, she was reporting from Gambia. That's how we were getting the news and putting it out there, so we really have to say thank you so much for, for.
She's a real Gambian. Next, Nde, you can now come and thank the wonderful, amazing Ismaila Sisay, our own brother. And Mr. Bo for taking their time out of the busy schedules to come and meet us all.
Um, yeah, I just, um, I just want to say, uh, thank you so much, um, this is not the first time Ismaila. Uh, is coming here, we hosted him before he became a minister. And even I think before you go into practice, you were at that time planning as well, going to politics as well. And we will say thank you so much that he came and took the opportunity to contact, to contact. And he wanted to meet and meet the community to talk about some of the issues we know is really challenging eh, in the Gambia. We cannot say it's groovy and everybody knows my position about that. But today, we are not in here for that.
Not in the mood.
Yeah, yeah. We are not here for that, we're here to to discuss and look at these issues as brothers and sisters. Uh, as people who also are concerned about Gambia and what we can do. So we'll say thank you so much, uh, for taking the time to come and also thank you so much, uh, Mr. Bo as well. For also joining and taking time to be here with us also as a lawmaker, because we scream a lot about the lawmakers in the Gambia. We always scream, we said, when we lose hope with the government, our hopes are in with the members of parliament. And I just want to say, everybody, thank you so much, you know, it's so difficult, it's, uh, Norway actually goes to sleep in July. June, everybody is running around doing everything to finish your work and then just ship, you are going for holidays. But you people have your time in this evening to be here with us and really, uh, make this day really memorable for us. And thank you so much, and thank you so much, Nene, for coordinating and then of course, uh, chairing the whole meeting. Thank you so much, Mamos, Lamin, Lamin has been really with us since we started Gambia House. Lamin ha- make sure that everything is streamed live, make sure when we go to all the meetings, it's documented and it's taken. And not only that, he was in the Gambia training today, MPs streaming, it's Lamin who was there training them.
Together with I Africa, right?
This, with I Africa, make sure that they, uh, the, all these things we are seeing, uh, MPs are able to stream. Parliament is able to, and that, that's Lamin, he's always our media hope. Even in the struggle, we used to stream from Gambia because of, uh, Lamin, that's the ability. Thank you so much, Lamin, for always being with us, free of charge, we haven't had the money to pay him. He will always be with us to make sure that things are documented. I would say thank you so much, and of course, Dietman giving us the space, uh, this cozy place to 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 be for free as well. To just utilize it and have this meeting today, thank you so much, everybody, and thank you.